Let's start this evening, and then I will follow the Son of the Holy Spirit, Amen. Mary, Mother of Church, and our Mother, present our prayer of thanksgiving to your Son. Beg from heaven praises we need to be faithful disciples who follow him with enthusiasm and joy. May our witness to the love of God bear fruit in our archdioceses, parishes, homes, and parks. Teach us to be God's joyful witnesses, to radiate Christ for all we do, that all people might know and love and follow your Son through this life and to the next. Come over these years, enlighten my understanding, to know your commandments. Strengthen my heart against the wiles of the enemy, inflame my mind. I have heard your voice, and I don't want to part from my heart to resist you by saying later tomorrow, "New church, amen." Let's hear it, though, tomorrow for me, with spirit of truth and wisdom, spirit of understanding and counsel, spirit of joy and peace. I want to watch you move. I want it because you want it. I want it to pass you on it. I want it to bring you on it. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, Amen. Could you put my one more? Sorry, there's something on the top of my laptop. So let's just get started this evening, so my thoughts, we start with a passage from the second chapter of the Acts of the Apostles. "They, that is, the apostles and the entire community believers devote themselves to the apostles' teaching in fellowship, to the breaking of bread and the prayers. All came upon everyone because many wonders and signs were being done by the apostles. All who believed were together, and all had, and had all things in common. They would sell their possessions and goods, and distribute the proceeds to all, as any had been. Day by day, as they spent much time together in the temple, they broke bread at home and made their food with glad and generous hosts, praising God and having a good loaf of all the people; and day by day, Lord added to their numbers those who were real saved." So in this short little passage from Acts of the Apostles, we get to kind of the why. Why is it happening? Why are we here? And what ultimately does this mean? And I think, well, the why we're here, why now, comes down to a number of things. And I think that big why is because as we look at the archdioceses of Cincinnati, for the number of Sunday masses, so if you take all the Sunday masses we have in the archdioceses, where they're at, seating capacity, and then go with how full those churches are, on average, across the archdioceses. Our churches are, on average, thirty-seven percent full, thirty-seven percent, so seventy-three percent empty. Most of that space is pretty empty. And so as why now, a good portion of that is, well, we are decreasing, not increasing. What we just read in the Acts of the Apostles, day by day we move, we're adding to their number, who are being saved. That is no longer by and large the case across the archdioceses. There are parishes that aren't thriving, there are parishes that are actually doing rather well, and their numbers are increasing. But by and large, we're facing, not fully because of the fault of church or because of the lie of faith, although that is certainly, I think, the major factor. Demographics also have something to do with it. But as we look at this, we have not just too few priests. One of my things I just said, as people have brought up again and again, is that, well, we have too few priests. That's true. But at the same time, we also have too few people. There are just not as many people in the few, not as many people practicing faith. And I oftentimes quote, because I have somebody who crunched this number for me, is that as you look at the archdioceses of Cincinnati, the amount of priests per person has actually gone up over the past ten years. That is, about ten years ago, there was one priest for every thousand, every thousand Sunday Mass going Catholics. In 2019, so before COVID, so I'm sure it's even worse now, that number was one for every nine hundred Mass going Catholics. So there's fewer Catholics per priest then. So we're facing those kind of issues. So we have too few people, too few priests. But then at the same time, probably too many buildings, too many facilities, too many institutions. And so now, as the Archbishop has worked at this, along with a number of other priests, a number of other consultants in a firm, our consulting firm that is in Fortin, we've taken into account all those things, and we've, instead of just saying, well, we need to downsize, there's also an end goal to this. The goal is ultimately what we just read in Acts of the Apostles. The end goal is for us to, once again, be focused primarily on breaking of bread, so the Eucharist, be focused on prayer, focused on community, the community that is journeying together towards the Lord, and then also evangelizing, so adding day by day numbers to our number. So the goal is ultimately to get out. And by, now you're thinking, well, downside, how can we help us do that? I think it helps us in several ways, because I don't think without adjustment to our parish, everyday parish life, most people have now experienced Mass events. I got one Mass back in Memorial Day. Most places haven't experienced that. And so I think until we actually feel the reality of what is going on around us, that doesn't make us change our perspective. Until we change our perspective, we can't refocus and reevaluate what the mission is, which is ultimately to save souls. So, we just have to, so as we begin this process, we need to attempt to even out the workload. So not just like on priests, but also for all of you. There are a lot of institutional clerks, a lot of parishes that are struggling financially, volunteers, or some of the other ways. And so by pulling together resources, those parishes will be better able to serve their family. So hopefully, by joining together the families of parishes, the goal is ultimately help us to help each other better, to mutually support each other, to use each other's mutual strengths and weaknesses to kind of move forward in the end. So, as we begin this process, the first thing I will want to focus on this evening, just before we jump into the concrete mini plan for use of the plan itself, is if you look at the front page of your handout as guiding principles for people to light, so there's seven of them, or six of them, sorry, six guiding principles. So let's just briefly, so as we go through all this, it'll also be helpful for you, because as you make public comment on the website, it'll probably be helpful for you to reference these in order for your comments to kind of happen in a greater amount of power, a greater amount of impact. So, the first one is, as I stated earlier, is that the Eucharist is at the center of who we are. As the Second Vatican Council's document on literature, St. Michael's Church included, the Eucharist is the source and summit of the Christian life. It's a source and summit of what we do as a parish, it's where everything leads to, and it's where everything is supposed to flow from. So as we focus on the Eucharist, what this is talking about here, is also like prayer for the celebration of it. So one thing that's going to happen probably with this people to light process, is that we, as priests, are not going to be committed on a regular basis to celebrate as many Sunday masses. So we're probably only going to be allowed to say two on Sunday, eight at the Mass, so three to the weekend masses. So that means that, that will kind of change the way Jewish Mass schedules work. But the goal being is that, and much is true for my previous assignment, I have done that here, my previous assignment celebrating three masses in a day is rather jostling, and downright unprayerable by the fervor of oftentimes. And so by Eucharist, by focusing more centrally on that, and helping priests to pray it better, will also help all of you to pray Mass at their as well. Second one is the church. We're all part of the body of Christ, the mystical body of Christ. So we participate together in the reality of Christ's life, death, resurrection, and resurrection by virtue of our baptism. And so by focusing on the church community, so without being all actively participating, so again, going back to that static point you had at the beginning, our churches are thirty-seven percent full. By downsizing our Mass schedules, Mass is going to get a lot of glory, and that is going to give us a very, very impressive feeling of the Mass. It's already kind of happened here, people have commented that the 9:15, 11:00 AM are very, very commonly, pretty packed, pretty packed. And people have made note of how much different that feels, to celebrate Mass, to worship one another in a full church. And so I even think, going back to the first point, that's like a church, we experience more fully whatever our churches are full of, and it actually feels like we're part of a larger reality, and not simply islands kind of sitting out there in the peus. Leadership. So pastors in collaboration with pro-keoplers, bishops and lay ministers, active or proper function. So whoever the pastor of our current, or what our proposed region is currently ends up being, whoever that is, what that, what will happen is, obviously, he is the chief shepherd, or the chief shepherd. As pastor, the chief shepherd of our particular churches is then his archbishop. I, as the pastor of Holy Angels, am his representative in Christ, the shepherd, in the boundaries of Holy Angels Parish. And then from there, what will happen, so with leadership, what this one is talking about, is obviously, so as I mentioned, priesthood, and also delegating probably other things, and pro-keoplers. So in some regions, they're going to have three pro-keoplers and one pastor. So there's pro-keoplers who probably take on some administrative responsibilities as well. And I'd even envision in our current region, like, pro-keopler becoming like chaperoning both Catholic schools within our particular region currently, to kind of take home that larger role of sharing that. And obviously, also beginning to delegate certain responsibilities to other people. So trying to, trying to, in an appropriate fashion, there's things that only priests can do, and as a pastor, only I can do. But there are things that sometimes I do as priests, as a pastor, that I probably don't really need to do. And that'll probably need to be passed off to somebody else. So sharing that leadership role there is going to be a big part of moving people to light forward. Stewardship. Obviously, this is kind of, and stewardship is always kind of like a euphemism in the church for money. But I also think, more particularly to this plan itself, what this will actually refer to is better stewardship of our resources. So, as we look moving forward as stewardship, do we need all the facilities that we have, and our family of parishes are going to become one canonical parish? Do we need all of it? That'll be a question we ask ourselves. Do we need all of this? And then also stewardship of our resources. So at some point, the parish, families of parishes' staffs will come together to better utilize and be more universal. And so hopefully, we can utilize each other's gifts and strengths as staffs coming together for one and all of them. And so it's going to be better utilizing manpower, it's going to be better utilizing the space, and better utilizing all of our resources. So we'll get to some examples of that, I think, and what our project or possible region is will be for. And evangelization. So often, our parishes have been more focused on here and now, just simply keeping the doors open, trying to maintain what we currently have. The goal of people to light is to stop focusing so much on just keeping the doors open, and instead focus on building the church, baptizing people in Christ, and bringing people into the fullness of faith in Jesus Christ within the Catholic Church. And then the sixth one, something we already do very well here on the angels, love and action. So we'll be beacons, not only light, but also beacons of charity and justice. You know, Lady Angel's Soup Kitchen, or Outreach Committee, we have a number of other people that just help out in different ways, but listen to New Life Center. So ways of going out and sharing the justice that God desires for us to do with the pro-life movement, the Carrot for the Poor, and all those other things that we already do as a parish. So that's going to be a more continued pillar of who we are as a parish. And so that is kind of the guiding principle. So as we move forward, we'll probably hear a lot more about this. As you make decisions to move forward as family of parishes, this is going to be something that we're going to have to have in front of us as pastoral council, finance councils, staff, all those things. So that's the guiding principles for people to light. Now, let's get to what everybody came for, which is the nitty-gritty details of what the plan currently is, right? So on the backside of this page, you can see all the, all the different, the proposed families of parishes within our deanery, plus St. Mary's Deanery. So following people to light July 1st, 2022, will also be St. Mary's Deanery, which includes mostly First River County and St. Mary's. That deanery will be joined with Sydney Deanery currently, which is Shelby, Alway, Sodar, yeah, Shelby, Alway, and Dark County. So those two deaneries will be joined together into one. And our project, so let's just kind of look at what is around us. So we are on the right side of our handout, MW7, so Northwest 7. And so that project of region right now is St. Michael at Fort Larmine, St. Peter Hall in Newport, and Holy Angels in Sydney. So that projected region there is what is currently in place, is what was projected for us to be our future family of parishes beginning July 1st, 2022. Now, I think that this plan is rather good, because I want to kind of point out what could have been. There is, I've heard it said, and it's a pretty reliable source, that the original plan for us was, so right now in this current plan, we have two priests. So if you go south of us to Northwest 6, so St. Teresa, Cappington, St. Mary's, Pickwa, St. Patrick, Troy, Transfiguration, and West Millman, if you look at those five parishes there, that region and our region were all supposed to be together, together with three priests. Now they don't split, they each have two priests apiece. So, that's what could have been, and I think that would have been, yeah, I think they realized they would not have gotten a pastor that wanted to take that, or a pastor that would take that, that would not have done. So, as we look at this, I just want us to like recognize the great gift that it is, that they've recognized, and so they take on comments and think back into it there. But I think our particular region right now has a lot of benefits. As people have taught, people have family at Fort Larmine. A lot of people have family at Newport. There's a lot of familial connections already taking place, a lot of social connections. Shelby County has a very distinct culture, a great culture. I love Shelby County a lot. People are really, really rooted in what, what their fam, and their families are really rooted in their communities, really rooted in their history. And I think this kind of keeps all of us together there in a very profound and beautiful way. And then also, along with that, three beautiful churches, so three churches that are thriving, doing very well. And then also, in looking at this, you know, somebody pointed out that we also have complementary facilities, we look at it in that way. We here have a school, you know, we have so, a school building, which is very beneficial, not just for the school, but also for other things. And St. Michael at Fort Larmine has a large hall, which is something we don't have here, thus why we're having a town hall, the church, because we don't have like a nice hall space to do something of this sort. And so I think those people, if you see that, that they complement each other, they complement each other very, very well. Along with just the act of, I think, being a manageable sort of situation, because both Fort Larmine has the most baptisms in the archdioceses, St. Michael does. So there's a lot of young, a lot of life there, which is great, because Fort Larmine is growing quickly. And I think that all of these things help to really balance out and help us to strengthen one another and move forward. And so I think that this current region works out really, really well, because it also leaves us down to schools, like the other region would have four schools under one pastor. Now, at Holy Angels, then Layton and Catland, whereas it would have, Pickwa, Patwa, and St. Patrick, Troy, along with Layton and Holy Angels in one previous region. So this also makes it easier to administer the schools and make sure they're covered for and provided for. So, I think that's sort of the given strength, there's nothing other one to get list, but we'll just keep it then. So then moving down south, I already mentioned that particular region, that region is staffed by two priests, as our region is also, our family of parishes also staffed by two priests. And then as you kind of go over to the west there, you can see that big Dark County region there, which includes St. Greenie and, oh shoot, that's not, that's not down there. So St., so St. Greenie, Ruchy, MacInteption, Bradford, St. Mary's, Crumville, St. Nicholas, and Alsgoat, Cleveland, Frenchtown, St. Dennis, Versailles, and St. Louis and Dorston. So those are, that's seven parishes will be administered by three priests, so the three priests that will be assigned to that particular region. So that is, yes, that region is off to the west of Fort Larmine and Newport, off to our west. So that's that region over there. And then moving north of Fort Larmine, northwest of Fort Larmine, you can see the, if you look at that region there, as you make public comment, I'll just tell you and forewarn you, just consider that as black, untouchable. Because Minister Egypt, Mary Local, that entire cluster of parish around Suma, those are precious blood parishes. They have been for over a hundred years. That is not going to change. The precious blood have already agreed to take whatever they're going to take. They had that discussion, the Archbishop, he asked them, "Are you willing to take this?" And they said, "Yes." That's not going to change. So if you have any kind of suggestions for reconfiguration, just note that that probably will not be taken into account, because that is already been settled with the precious blood, and so thus, it will not be touched, if that makes sense. So, because people have asked, "Why didn't you bring it go with Mister, White, Fort Larmine, or with Mister?" And it's simply because it's precious blood. You can't, so that's, they've already decided to take that one, and they're not willing to take anything else, and we don't want to take Mister from them. So that's the way that that's our way to work, so just so you know that. So that region there, yeah, I think that's all I mean to say about that one. And then that, that'll also be administered by hypothetically three priests, but the precious blood can staff that power in English too. Since again, that's their pay, they'll staff that power in English too. And then if you go directly north of us, so we have St. Joseph's, Wollpock, St. John and Fryburg, St. Lawrence and Wrighton, MacInteption, Botkins, Sacred Heart of Jesus, McCartyville, Labor Redeemer, and the Freedom. So that is, again, is six, yeah, six parishes, that'll be administered by three priests. So as we look at that, that's three, so those six parishes will be administered by three priests. And as you look at this, kind of like this western edge here, it's also important to take into account, so we kind of have some claim to fame in the Sydney Deanery, within our particular region, people wonder why, why does our region only have three, whereas most of them have at least five? That is because Fort Larmine in 2019 had the highest mass attendance, and Sydney Deanery, Holy Angels was the third highest. So there's two of the biggest parishes within the Deanery, and thus, those two are going to take more, are going to take more to the minister too, so that's why those two are together. McCartyville is then also, that's the second highest mass attendance parish in the Deanery. So and then over to our east, there is eleven parishes altogether, Clark, Champagne, and Logan County. That'll be administered by four priests, if I have my numbers all on my sheet, this past weekend. Four priests will administer that, general super region of eleven parishes. So, those are the proposed regions that surround us at this given time. And again, I think looking at this, it's just important to keep in mind that a lot of this, there is a lot of thought that led to this. So they, the consulting firm that did, that all crushed all the numbers and put this plan together initially, obviously, split this into the archdioceses. They have what they call an index, which is kind of, I call it not a liberal parallel, that's incorrect, but kind of this little thing where they put in mass attendance, number of Catholic house schools, all the sacramental numbers, and then schools, and the number of other factors that they kind of put into this index. And then basically, how many priests are assigned to that family of parishes? On a scale from zero to a hundred, they assign how much workload that is with the priests in that particular family of parishes. So then this proposed Deanery that we have, Northwest Deanery, among all eight parishes, all eight families of parishes, the highest workload per priest, per priest is for the family of parishes directly south of us, which is, you know, Pickwa, Troy, West Millman, Cappington. The second highest is actually our particular family of parishes. So that one south of us has a, on a scale of zero to a hundred, is a seventy-seven. We are a sixty-seven. The next closest is directly north of us, with Petersburg Parishes plus Sacred Heart and Holy Redeemer, that's a fifty-six. So there's kind of a big jump there in that workload as you go up and down there, but that's kind of how that all works. So note that they also did, like, not just like simply on a map, just like point out numbers, but they tried to account that workload as much as they could on that index as much as possible. So, that is, the plan is a purpose stand. So, some, just, so again, at the end, actually, I'll tell you, just get some, some tips on making comments, so that way they kind of have the force, of course, and they're taken very seriously. So I'll start at the end, but I just kind of want to also then give you a breakdown and a timeline for people to light. So obviously, we just had to leave some of the people's plan, public comment, or pendulum, I'll talk about it to you. And then come November, at some point in November, they haven't decided yet, the Archbishop will finalize the plan. And that plan will be finalized, we'll discover what the finalized plan is. Don't really expect our plan to change much anymore, because if it's already kind of shifted up quite a bit, as I mentioned, I think it's already a bit better, but it could still change. February, priest assignments will be made public, so Father Aaron and I will probably be getting calls before December, to ask, will take whatever side of it is. And then in March, will begin, the beginning, will be the beginning of starting the pastoral planning for family of parishes. So there are a lot of things that are going to have to be determined before we can start, well, three things, or two things, maybe three. One is, obviously, if the family of parishes share priests, they're going to have to decide how they split costs, which is first going to be the priest salary. So that is going to have to be a discussion between all the pastoral councils, all the finance councils, all pastoral councils of the various parishes within that family. So that'll be one of the things that has to be determined. Second thing that will have to be determined is Mass schedule. So how are we going to divvy this up? Because each priest will probably be allowed to say three weekend masses. So if we can only have six weekend masses in our region, how are we going to divvy that up? How's that going to work? So that's one, that'll be what we have to do there. And then also, one thing, I don't know if this is going to happen, I've been pushing pretty hard for this, but to also have a name of the family of parishes by July 1st. By name, I mean like what our calendar name will be, so, you know, St. Jose, St. Mary's, St. above, family of parishes, something like that, right? So we're going to have to come up with a name for the families of parishes, that'll be in conjunction with pastoral council, probably a number of input from a number of parishioners. But I would hope that we would have that done by the time we come together, because Northwest 7 just doesn't seem to have much of a ring to it. So, I prefer have like a sacred name, come July 1st, that way we can identify ourselves, not so much as Holy Angels parishioners, St. Michael parishioners, or St. Peter Hall parishioners, but instead, more so as whatever the name for family of parishes, St. John Hall, or, you know, family of parishes. So if they identify themselves by that particular sacred name. So, I think that that's really all I have, is everything else that you can actually create at this moment. So, at this time, we'll have two and a, so upfront is the podium, so if you hit it, I think, I don't know if I left it on or I'm going to get it, Father Aaron can hit it. If anybody has any questions they want to ask, you can ask them. Just note that the plan, like, first of all, the plan is not set, it's all set at a wall line. There's details that we can't know yet, but whatever we know, I will tell you, so.
I don't know if you can answer this question yet, but will the other churches that we are together with, will those doors be closed?
So, no, so I think everybody heard that question just for the sake of recording. So the question is, are the other parishes that we are joined with, will they have to close their doors? The answer is no. So they will not have to close their doors, because, well, let's, there's a couple of things that go into that. They're still distinct parishes. So they are still going to have their own identities, and we hope that as many of the parishes as possible have Sunday Mass. So obviously, six Sunday, six Sunday masses, we only have four here currently. So my guess is we're going to go down to probably three, down to at least three here at Holy Angels. And then, we're going to, then that's also going to have to be divided up between the other ones, to give you two or three, depending on how that all ends up working out, because seating capacity's taken into account, but you cannot simply close a parish. That's not what's going to happen, more likely, merger's going to happen, but essentially, their doors will not be shut at all. So hopefully, they will still have a Mass, even if they don't have Sunday Mass, a lot of those smaller parishes that probably will not have Sunday Mass from July 1st of 2022. Hopefully, those parishes will still have a Mass during the week, and you'll still be able to have baptisms, white unto funerals at those particular sites as well. So, just to take note of that, there's a bunch of celebrations there as well. So the doors will not be closed. That is something to be determined by family of parishes throughout the houses. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Father, my question's about, because I heard about her about they're also doing this for maintenance. I'm just wondering, does that have anything to do with them only closing schools since the molding?
Oh, gotcha. Okay. So the question has to do with if this is about maintenance, does it mean that schools are going to close? So the answer to that is complicated, but what's going to, what's going to happen? Now, this is not that fully defined for us, so don't quote me on this. So I'm not absolutely sure that this is how it's going to work. But since by July first of 2027, so five years after the families of parishes begin, those family of parishes first become one canonical parish. And as they become one canonical parish, that probably means that regions where there's more than one school will probably have to train to one. So what that looks like, again, it's going to be determined by that particular family of parishes. So whether that means that you end up having everybody go to one site, or whether you have K P four at that site and five for eight at another site. Obviously, for us, like Lehman is distinct already from Holy Angels. So Holy Angels School would still remain a part of, Holy Angels Parish, whatever the future of family of parishes, once it becomes a single parish, would be the parish school or this projected family of parishes. Okay? Does that make sense?
Right. So that other churches in our family, they don't have schools.
They do not have schools.
But the one in Troy, if they become one, it's not.
Yes. And yes. Most likely. Now, I don't, now that, again, that has not been fully laid out for us. So I don't know if that's one hundred percent what the plan is, but that would be my guess. So I would say most likely, but not motion. Does that make sense?
And then that's also happening in the Cincinnati area.
Yes. Yes, because there, in Cincinnati, there are, there is a region that has five schools. A family parish has five schools. So God bless that pastor. So. So do you have any questions?
I think this is kind of curious. If they close schools, what are they going to do with the empty buildings? I guess some, I mean, because they like to kind of get rid of, I should say, get rid of, but to reduce our real estate? Because that's like.
So, yeah. So I mean, I don't know, reducing facilities maybe. I don't know if reducing real estate is as likely. So I think, again, like each family of parishes is determined now because maybe, maybe the school will be down, let your children keep the states for parking lot or put up a parish that you've never had, like those kind of things. Okay, so basically, again, a lot of this is going to be left up to the individual family of parishes. It's going to be a pretty grassroots thing. The one thing they have to do is you have to make, you have to make a single canonical parish. But what that looks like is totally up to them. Because there's like a single canonical parish in southeast Indiana. All Saints has four different sites. So they have, they have three masses on Sunday morning, one divisional mass. So they each have a Sunday mass. But they're one canonical parish, all Saints, with St. Lawrence, St. Michael, I forget who the other two are called, but they all have this thing. So you're going to be able to determine at a grassroots level what that looks like. So what's it going to look like everywhere? I don't know, because everywhere we're probably a little bit different, how they make that work. So, but probably consolidation, and there may not be, I don't know. So, yep. So I don't have the answer to that question because, yeah, because I'm not the pastor of the situations. And because we're not three years down the road, so, yeah.
Do you have any idea of when this closes and what happens?
Again, it'll be, it'll pend on each place. And also, it's not going to be closing. It'll be a merger consolidation, so, yeah. Which may probably go down to a single site or two sites or whatever it is. But, yeah. So it's going to have identical bases in each place, depending on how ready they are, so, yeah.
Father, you indicated that the assignments were going to happen when you said February.
Yes.
So will the planning for mass schedules and those kinds of things be left to the new assignment pastors to do? I mean, you talked about work being done, but there's a chance you may not be in flight.
Yes.
So if that's the case, will those decisions just not be made until a new pastor comes? You asked a question on the one and two, just a.
Can I just answer it so that way I don't forget?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to forget it.
Sure.
So I'll just take one at a time. So with that, answering that question is, so planning for that will not be given until February, or it goes to a big public. But we can, again, move forward because once we know who the pastor is, then if I'm not him, then I can say, what, so here's what we're thinking. What do you think? Right? So basically, I can easily ease on, tend to say, does this look favorable to you? And what you, is this what you have in mind? And he says, no, then I can say, okay.
Sure, but we see now in travel where you're not, you're working.
Not really, not really.
That's what I would.
Yes.
Secondly, in, in looking at Fort Larmine's website, the parish of theirs, looking at a new facility for, I think, C C D and some, they did a survey. I think they said they have five hundred and fifty kids or something like that.
Yes.
And they just don't have the facility to handle it. So I'm questioning whether planning like that, not necessarily theirs, but others, throughout the whole scheme of things, are going to kind of be put on hold until this whole thing's figured out. Because if we've got too many facilities, would a church like that even be, quote, offered?
Sure. So the answer to that is, so they're still a state parish. They still got to move forward because with their C C D program too, they do let out Fort Larmine during the day for religious education. So with that, I don't know. I'm not much sure if they're moving forward with that or not, but that's still, you can still kind of move forward with some stuff. Because I mean, it'll likely, but we're looking at a possible pre-reading state classroom this year. So I mean, like, different things will still have to happen. And you can't ship, kids are going to C C D during the school day in Fort Larmine. We're not going to really ship them here in the evening because that's not what they do. So, yeah. So basically, I mean, I think that they're, knowing Father Sean, I certainly think, know that he's probably taking that into account. Because he's a good pastor, a good man, and he looks towards the future. So, so, yeah. So I would expect that they have to take that into account. And I don't know if that was taken into account, if that was something that was in the works. Because I've heard that for a few years. So it may have just been a work for a few years, and so now they're trying to figure out how they're going to raise it until we figure out what's needed, so.
Having been in the business world of my life, I know how difficult it is when two companies merge because there's two cultures.
Yes.
And in this situation, you know, all the things that we've talked about here are very optimistic. But the reality is that there's cultures that may be more difficult to break together than what a plan you may suggest can happen. And I hope that's definitely taken into consideration. I'm sure it will be.
Sure.
Because in a small community like Fort Larmine, yeah, you can, Sydney. Fort Larmine is in St. Michael's. And, and, and Sydney, the history of Sydney is deeply rooted in Holy Angels. And those cultures are going to be difficult to merge, just a comment.
Sure. And I mean, we, when they're saying that, so my optimism is not so much saying that it's going to be all hunky-dory, sunshine, rainbows, and, you know, puppy dogs. It's going to be horrible. But I'm saying that in terms of having relationships to build upon, I think we have a lot going for us. And merging cultures takes place all the time. So I think we're completely capable of doing it because we're first of all, most Catholic, so, yeah.
Father, thank you. Thanks for doing this. Fort Larmine has more Catholic kids than Sydney Angels does.
Correct. Correct.
In their quote-unquote state-supported Catholic school policy. So.
What are we doing?
We're not going to give in to these kids. Fort Larmine kids, I don't know of any Fort Larmine student that ever has gone lame or came to the Angels. It's still waiting to be added. I don't understand since fifty years ago, we merged with Pickwa, Troy, to Lehman Church. Why that wasn't allowed? In order to help keep our schools strong. Because from what I'm hearing, the answers you gave from John, the other person, it sounds to me like we must grab a Catholic school.
What, in what way was that suggested to you?
Because now Troy and Pickwa have to combine into one place.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I don't understand that rule since they've been working in there, the roles are not increasing.
Well, I said, I didn't say that that was definitely going to happen. I said, that's what it looks like with Lehman being. But as to how the school's consolidation is going to work, I do not have the information how that's going to exactly work.
Okay. I just, it's my opinion then that moving this in big, I'd like to avoid leaving a great evening. God bless it, it can work. In order to keep our Catholic school system that's only going in the North Region that we have.
But there's, there's Catholic schools in St. Mary's in Southern as well, so.
True. And, and once allowed, we can get a student to St. Mary's or once allowed to breathe. I do complain, but I don't know. I just think this is one thing that might break your heart.
One, one way to break your heart, I'm very.
Well, I guess one question for you is, if I'm concerned about that, do I put that in the people's list?
Yeah. Of course. Yeah. So, yeah. So I mean, of course, yeah, put those concerns in there. I guess I don't know how it breaks your heart because again, in looking at this, this would make, this would make the pastor of that particular region responsible for four schools. You want to kill your priest who's ever seen him? Do that. That's all I'm going to say. You know, so I'm just, that's, that's my point is that to do that. And also culturally speaking, you know, we talk about culture. We think culture is different between, you know, like each parish's culture. I think Pickwa and Troy doesn't seem like beyond the school. I think people actually have a lot of connections there. So I mean, I, I think that then you're trying to break together, you're focusing on the schools. And we're not focusing on the parish, which ultimately gives life to the schools. So I think that's going to make an issue as well as that we have to take into account more regularly the parishes, not schools. And Lehman's still going to be the same. And obviously, unless they, um, what would you say? Possibly speaking, hypothetically, that's what we're looking for. If Pickwa and Troy come together, consolidate schools, the same thing that already happens with Holy Angels and those three schools sent to Lehman continue to happen. And I think even, you know, as we've, you know, like Fort Larmine, we're probably not going to be able to go there. But we do have, I think, a handful of household kids, which would be reports, school district, that already come to Lehman School. So I mean, there is also a possibility of looking at, because household is different school district than Fort Larmine is altogether in that, in that regard. So there's also, I think, possibilities for expanding our license. Because part of the reason why Fort Larmine has more kid, or has more kids is because in Shelby County, this is one of the numbers that they came, that we were given. In Shelby County, our birth rate has dropped by six percent over the past ten years. Fort Larmine's has probably gone up. Ruchis has gone up. So guessing where it has been most they've fallen to is Sydney. And so as a result, the fact that the school is still kind of expanding, it's kind of impressive here in Sydney. But, I mean, so those are things we have to address. It was that, and those three school districts, it's all declining birth rates. A few places that are actually growing are basically like Fort Larmine, St. Henry, Coldwater, and Fort Larmine. Those are the only places with possible birth rates in the North, even in the North. So like, there's a lot of things. But, but, but I'm going to say that if you feel that way, put it down, for sure. Make that comment.
How does track damage affect the racing?
Yes.
I guess my other question is, did you talk in here, did you say that the old guys are trying to make everything the same in all the areas, like one priest can say three masses, and the masses are all the same? No, there's either a mass here or it's Latin or it's Chinese.
Well, no. So, so no, what I'm saying is the number of masses that the priest can say is going to be. So according to Code Canon Paul, we're allowed, supposed to take, say, two masses in a day. A third for a just household priest. So regularly scheduled masses, that's all we're talking about, is just the number of masses the priest would be able to say once. But in terms of liturgy itself, like that's not going to be dictated any further than what's already laid down in the literature laws of the church, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
That being said, so would you be doing mass at the other churches? And would other pastors or priests be doing mass with us?
So the most likely, so again, this is like all hypothetically, because it's going to work differently everywhere. But hypothetically, so like how it works, remember I was out at Walpox in Watkins and St. Lawrence and St. County Fryburg? Is one week I had a rotation of having five thirty PM masses at Watkins, having eight thirty at St. John's Fryburg, having ten thirty at Watkins. And then the following week, and then Father Sean had another circuit. So four thirty at St. Joe's, seven thirty at St. Joe's, nine thirty at St. Lawrence, eleven o'clock at St. Joe's. So basically, then we would, then eventually you can switch. Okay? So then, so you, yeah, so every other week, probably, since there's two priests, you probably get a, every week, we give away that that would work.
Okay. That's what John.
Yeah, that's probably, that's most likely scenario. That's not for sure, but it's most likely scenario, yeah.
Father, I'm here to you on my most simple identity here.
I doubt it.
I think most of these people are for better. And I don't know why I'm coming from this brief view. But back in nineteen seventy-five, in this parish, we started a little prayer group. Within two years, there was a hundred and thirty people, not from Holy Angels, from Ruchis, Versailles, Fort Larmine, St. Mary's, McCartyville, New Breven, Watkins. They came for an hour and a half Tuesday night, every season of the year. We were not tremendous people, okay? But our vocation, our vision was act to forty-two.
Yeah.
Just what you're talking about. We centered on prayer. We centered on the spirit. We centered on community. We centered on equals. But those were, they were people, and they, we were all ordinary. We were, the priests did come, but they came as members.
Sure.
What was important is they learned they had gifts. They learned they had talents, and they used them.
Sure.
And we called each other brothers and sisters because we knew we were.
Yes.
And anybody here was ever there, think of them.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe the spirit is flowing in this archdiocese. All we can talk about is our faith, our worship, is that we need to see Fort Larmine and, and St. Peterville as our family, okay? And not any kind of competition. You know, what can I do to help Fort Larmine and their children? What can I do for them? How can I pray for them? And form bonds with them, you know? And how can the staffs help each other? How can we contribute to whatever they need? So we don't have the sense of what we're losing, of what we're gaining. Now, about twenty years after the group had started, and we believed in the prophetic word, the Lord said, now, you're going to become very, very small. I want you to go back to your parish, take your gifts, take your talents, take your prayers, take your gifts, and build each other, and build up. But when that happened, none of us ever lost our relationship. We can run into somebody who we hadn't seen for forty years, and it's just like yesterday.
Yeah.
And that's because of the gift of the Holy Spirit. And that's what we were, we were parish and prayer group. The life in the spirit of the Lord was evangelistic. It helped grow their relationships. So they went and brought people in from their families and from their community to find the Lord. And I, my encouragement to all of us is to maybe just let this work out, you know, to trust a little bit, to pray, to write the beacons of light if you have a concern. But you know, things may work. to pray, to write the beacons of light if you have a concern, but you know, things may work out a lot better than we think, you know?
Like they will.
And maybe we may have more priests, you know, because they will wanna be priests because they will feel the entire world out, you know? So as you, as you heard, my sinful mind.
But that's beautiful, Martha. So thanks for that, Father. And I think that that's, I think that's a great to kind of point to raise is, I think there can be a focus on competition, what we're losing, what we could lose. And I think that as we move forward, there's gonna be possibilities we never could have imagined that come forward. And so we just have to trust the Lord's got it all in hand. And I think that there's a lot of good that can come out of this because I've already seen it in all of you. So as Martha just said, I've also heard people say, express concern, like, Father, what about those, like, the question was raised, like, or somebody said, are those other parishes gonna have to close? I don't think that was like, yay, we're gonna give the only parish a town. I think it was like, oh no, I don't want them to have to go through that, right? So I've already seen from all of you this care for those around us. And that's a beautiful thing. I think that's a testament to the care for other communities. And so I think we're already beginning to see that a lot of that, a lot of people's minds, I've heard that expressed a lot, like, I don't want these little parish to have to close. I don't want them to lose something. And so I think we're already seeing that there's gonna be a sphere of generosity and self-sacrifice. I can already see a lot of that in your hearts. And so kudos, proud of that, and that's all.
Thank you, Father, for having us tell them all tonight. I read the articles and information in the Telegraph, and I've watched the interview with the Archbishop twice.
Sure.
And it appeared to me that his primary concern is the health and wellbeing of his priests, such that this archdiocese. And then the follow-up kind of, John and Martha said, if we have a pastor here, he's not gonna live very long because of competing cultures unless there's some other things in place, some joint bodies, administration, I mean, Layman High School didn't come, come together because Holy Angels wanted to pick for the joint. It was a combination of Pickwood and Sidney. Did the Archbishop, when he discussed this with the priest last week, talk about lay commissions where they would get together? And maybe even have one person as a coordinator, a building supervisor, business manager? Or is he gonna throw that all on the one pastor who in this area will have three managers with people bending his ear all the time?
So the answer to that is, and so there's, this hasn't been, because I think it's still words, so it hasn't been launched in the public website. Like all the priests got a collection of all those principles. There's a number of parameters, so like have guidelines, things that we have to do listed in there. So, um, administration, so. So the part of that is going to be that they expect pastor council, that's when you know the first things will be joined together. So various things after we become family parishes, there'll be a single pastor council of perhaps from each parish. And then also there'll be other commissions that will be like implemented, so that kind of allow them to make this. But there is this sort of plan in the works for an information implementation team that takes people from each parish to just, to help the pastor out. And obviously, I already have people that kind of do some of this, makes it like businessman, that show high hire, the C Ben does great jobs, the C R E, the knee stopper takes a lot of my place as the principal, like, there's sort of a lot of people that are doing a lot of that kind of stuff. And so I have every confidence that, you know, for the most part, that's what every staff's gonna wanna do. However, that's gonna be best for their pastor, my guess is they're gonna come together pretty quickly to make that happen. So I have every confidence that.
So the ultimate decision is gonna rely, they're gonna remain with the pastor?
What do you mean, the ultimate decision?
Well, who you would hire for, say, the D R E, the family parish.
Yes, yes, yeah. So like, that will be, but just like, but obviously there's things that need approval already from the finance committee or the archdiocese, and so, so financially speaking, that happens. And my guess is pastor council probably also have to have, like majority vote for decisions like obviously coming together as a single parish, that cannot be done without input and approval from pastor councils, so those kind of things.
So you're gonna need a pastor who has a lot of experience in, in getting people to work together, is it correct?
Well, I mean, I don't know what that means exactly, but except that we're gonna have a lot of pastors that probably don't have that much experience because you need to, because you're gonna need to be able to sign on for five years to get this into place, so. Yeah, those are things, but they're gonna, they're gonna get each of us kind of a leadership slash administration coach, so, I think archdiocese, so.
I think also, I'm gonna walk over here so they're not blocked by the door. I think also if you look at just the archdiocese, there are a very few priests that already have actually gone through something like this in the first place. Sure, there's a handful in small areas, but still many of our priests have just been named pastor at, you know, this area that has a region of three parishes already, and they've inherited that. Very few of our priests have actually gone through the actual process of bringing parishes together to work together. And so, you know, we are all going to be kind of, you know, learning with this as well. But the archdiocese is, you know, offering many different resources as well for the priests, for the pastors, to help them kind of figure out how best to go about this, what resources, what plans will help in the best way possible. So there are going to be additional helps for the priests to kind of give them a guidance on what is the best way to go about this, not to try and avoid the pitfalls that may actually happen, and to go about it in the best way.
Is the archdiocese gonna provide that help? Because when I listened to the Archbishop, and he says one of the complaints is that none of our priests has had business administrative experience, and his response was, they have eight years of theology and philosophy, we don't have any time to instruct them in that area. So will there be some help from the archdiocese for pastors?
Yeah, so I just said that we're gonna have a leadership and administration coach, so, yeah. And also, I, I also wanna like highlight something that's, I'm not saying that this is necessarily intended, but also like, is everything gonna fall, like the final decision gonna fall to the pastor? To go back to an earlier point that you were making about unity between parishes and between communities. I want what's best for all of you, believe it or not. That's actually what I want. That's what most pastors want that I've led. So it isn't like we're just sitting on some high my throat just to ask me if you are bidding. We do take your thoughts into account. We do take your feedback into account. We do care about you. So I think, again, that's a very dangerous thing to suggest that like, well, is the pastor gonna have that power? No, that's not the right way of looking at it. I've been entrusted as pastor, and whoever the future pastor is, has been entrusted with that authority from Christ, from the Archbishop. And so he's not coming, he's not thinking of himself as putting that position. He wants what's best for all the region. Does that mean everybody's really happy? No. There's at least so many resources, there'll be so much time, there's at least so much priests, so everything can happen. And so I think it's important also to remember that priests do have your best interests in front. Priests do want salvation, so they do want you to be holy. And so I don't, let's stop and avoid by trying to draw that dichotomy between us versus them. That's not true. And that's a false dichotomy. So we need to avoid that too. So just going back to that earlier, so, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So to, to, what's a common question? Um, relative to living arrangements with priests, I think it's important that you have, you have some kind of that same experience. When you, by having three priests in our, or two priests in our area, would you split up, living with the same people?
So the, so the answer is do not know. Because each priest will have different preferences. So if I, so like wherever I'm at, and I'll probably be a pastor where I'm at, I'll probably want to live with the other priest, whether it's one, two, one or two. Like I'm going to want to live with another priest. But that's gonna be determined at each region individually by what the priest wanted to. I think Father and I probably, we, we wanna live with another priest, so that's, that's a comment.
You end with a fish torture.
Yes. It's true.
And then the question I have is, could you talk a little bit about the financial impact of joining three parishes?
Yes, that's a good call. So thank you for that. That's a good question. So the question has to do with, um, like financial impact of bringing together three parishes. So there's multiple different, different levels. So the big, so like, let's, let's focus on what the big one is gonna be, which is becoming one canonical parish means the book, books, financial books will be one. So that's gonna be a big, big task. That doesn't happen though until we become one canonical parish. So financially speaking, you cannot legal funds between parishes. I'll repeat it three times. You cannot legal fund funds between parishes. You cannot do that. So whoever the pastor of this particular region is, this family of parishes is, it isn't like they can take funds from Holy Angels and transfer it to St. Mary's or vice versa. You can't do that. It is not allowed. The only, that's why we have financial agreement, that financial agreement I talked about, that's an agreement for shared cost, that this is how much each of us will pay for every shared cost. It's not one parish getting money from another. It's shared costs that then the other parishes are billed for. Whoever the primary parish is, I mean, that kind of writes out our checks and all that for shared costs. So that'll be, so speaking about that, financially speaking, that's gonna be a very, very sticky one. How that's gonna work, I don't know. That's gonna be finance committees, input from the archdiocese, lawyers, a lot of people are gonna be involved. Speaking of using gifts in the community, certainly think lawyers, accountants are gonna be a big part of that process. Financially speaking, at the beginning, I'm sure some people wonder, is this going to affect people's giving? Quite possibly. I don't know. Um, and so there's other effects with that. But financially speaking, shared costs will probably become a greater and greater thing because the archdiocese wants as soon as possible for parish tax to become one, and so far as they can become one. So that means that at some point in the future, probably within the next couple of years, parish tax will be employed not just by Holy Angels, but will be employees of the entire family of parishes. Say, obviously, like here at the school, they'll still, the teachers will still be paid by Holy Angels, will still be a Holy Angels payroll. Maintenance man, so like Cherokee Bart Allen, he already has enough to do here, so he's probably not gonna be paying this guy for all three parishes. And so those individuals will still probably be paid by the original parishes. But like, family, business manager, family C R Es, those kind of things, that'll eventually happen. Those will be shared costs. But yeah, so that's gonna be a big one. And how that's gonna exactly look, we don't know. Because really, this is the first time, and I think it's the way we can agree for the Archbishop. A lot of times whenever plans like this have been implemented in other dioceses, it's been pretty much like, in the night, next day. Hey, three months from now, you're all gonna become like one family, and the following year you become like a canonical parish, or parishes were closed overnight. So Archbishop Church has given us a good deal of latitude to make these decisions for our own. So I would say do not fear because it's going to take input from all the parishes to make the financial situation work. And so there's nothing that's going to be done, that's not gonna be done without an agreement from everybody, because again, financial stuff cannot be done without approvals from the finance committee. So just take a little bit of heart with that. So I don't know if that answered all the questions, but a lot of those things can't be known until we get to the degree of it because there's so many details that have to be worked out with that, so. Any other questions? Come this.
Thank you, Father, for the proposal. I just wanna make a more of a comment rather than a question. Um, for some people who may not know, I'm actually thrown through a wall. I'm a parish in a state minority. And, um, I'm, and I want people throwing eggs at me, going, this is your fault, because it's not. But I am really, like, really, um, you know, there's people that are going, is this gonna change? How are things gonna work? And kind of going back to what Martha said, I, I actually, there's great, like, great. I think Father said they have the most baptisms in the diocese. Obviously, there's tremendous, like, you, you can't make that up. The most baptisms in the diocese, uh, Holy Angels has four men in the seminary right now, right? There's tremendous fruit here as well. So like the opportunities, I think, are phenomenal. But I think a lot of us being, we have to take like an optimistic view on this. And really strive like what Father Jared said, is like, the goal is to commit to things, like to be, to help bring people to the first of all, to the Jesus. And I think that within both communities, that can really, so, this more just a comment. I'm excited. I love the people. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I love the people. That's, uh.
Yeah, no, that's fine. But let's feel free to correct each other in that way, make sure that we can continue to just like make sure that we recognize that everybody's a part of the family, so, yeah, let's do that.
My apologies, I'm a father.
Yeah, no, no.
But I think fruit's gonna become more of a, so I'm excited, so.
Yes. And so I think that that's the big thing to keep in mind is there are going to be difficult days ahead. There's gonna be rough days, not gonna lie to you. But I'm also extremely excited about what the possibilities of this all are, because I think this gives us a unique opportunity to again, just get outside of like our little bubble, and to encounter other people that we typically don't have to work with, and we're gonna have to work with them. And I think that that's gonna be amazing because I always love working with other people, and every time I go somewhere, you know, I wonder, is there gonna be people as awesome as there was in that place before? And every single time, there is. And there's more. And so I think that that's gonna be the case as we move forward as well. Just keep in mind, also that there's other people in the end, all ends with this. So with comments, as I mentioned, you know, I was gonna give a little indication about what would be helpful. So one thing that would be helpful, so like, they did this at our little priest meeting for beacons. At the end of their presentation, they said, okay, everybody strengths first, so list what the strengths of the plan are, both as a whole, but then also individually, like within our family of parishes, what are the strengths? I mentioned a few of those. John mentioned some of those. Be grateful, put those down. If you don't, don't have to. Or you probably shouldn't, because that would be a lie. And then, you know, put those down. So put down the strengths of the given region or the family of parishes. And the number two is concern. So what are like concerns about like? I'm concerned about how, what this is gonna mean for priests. Are they gonna have to live separately, or are they gonna be able to live together? I'm concerned about various cultures of different parishes coming together. I'm concerned that our Catholic school will be overlooked, whatever it may be, there's concerns. And then the third thing, which is kind of the thing that will have the most impact, it changes ideas for improvement. So saying things like, I think this all looks great, but I would suggest whatever it is. You know, like I've heard some people say, what about McCartyville? If you wanna say, hey, bring McCartyville to the family, go for it, you can do that. But be specific. It's always important to be specific with these things. Because general comments don't help a hell of a lot because we just say, and also status quo, going back to the status quo, you not need the answer. So don't say, like, I want Holy Angels to stay by itself. That's not gonna happen. That's not gonna be helpful. Or just to say, like, I don't like this. That may be true, but it doesn't help them get an idea of what you're talking about, what don't you like. Well, I don't like that this feels like it's destroying my parish identity. This feels like it's supplanting whatever it may be. But be very, very specific in your strengths, in your concerns, in your ideas and your approval. Because that's going to help the archdiocese to look at it and say, we never considered that. Like I mentioned, what the original plan for the region was, whatever priest pointed out, like, that's insane. They took that into account and changed it. So let's just be aware that being specific is going to be a key, but strengths, concerns, and ideas and approval. And I suggest everybody have some sort of strength because I also think that they may not necessarily like, all this person has to rush to events, probably it's not gonna be helpful to them. And also remember that there, as John said, there's great human beings over at Fort Army and the port. And as Martha pointed out too, across the area, there's also good people in the archdiocese. They will be reading your comments. So please be like, be respectful, be cheerful. be cheerful. Somebody has to read it, somebody has to sort through it. So please be kind to them, understand they're just trying to do their job, so please be kind to them, okay? And I would just really appreciate that in order, so, yeah, keep that up, because I know you all will have them, that's why I say, Laurie, but I just am really excited, be polite, be kind, be cheerful, be cheerful, to be honest, but still try to be as kind as possible. So is there anything else you can add? So you can make public comment at beaconsaucet.org, do we have the other ones out back yet? Those old sheets? Wait, I'm gonna, I'm asking, do we have the ones that people can make public comments back at the back of church? They're back there? So at the back of church, there's also, so it's not the same handout we currently have, but it has the handout from the entire archdiocese, so like on the front it has all the different degrees, the entire geographic area of the archdiocese, and on the back it has the family of parishes or our degree on the back. If you do not feel comfortable or worry, don't like that, and you don't have the internet, you can take one of those and you can make your public comments in there. If you have, like, you wanna write something out, or then just like circle it and say, does parish goes with it, but write something out or type it out, you can do that and stay glad together. You can't send it to the archdiocese yourself, but I'm going to suggest so, I'm gonna suggest you arrange for the parish office, and we will not look at it. So what, what Lori's gonna have at her office, on her desk is just an envelope, that you come in and say, I have, I have a sheet for a public comment. She's gonna open it up, and you're gonna put it inside, and we're never gonna look at it, I promise you. The only reason why I suggest doing it that way is because if you send it yourself, I think there's only, there's just a greater chance that it may not get there, or may not get to the person it needs to go to. But if it's not something from the parish itself, it's gonna get where it needs to go, does that make sense? So I would suggest if you wanna do the public comment that way, that's how you do it, but again, you can't send it yourself if you don't feel comfortable doing that, that's totally okay, but that would just be my suggestion. And again, I will not look at any of your comments, Lori will not look at any of your comments, nobody will look at them, we just wanna put it in there, we wanna make sure your comments, that want to be sent in that fashion actually get to be a proper person that I'm supposed to, so, okay?
Real quick, just with that, you know, the archdiocese wants the comments by October 20th, which means that we do have to mail it before October 20th, so just keep that in mind if you do want to have the written comments that you will have to get to the office earlier than that October 20th, I don't know exactly when we would wanna send it out, but I would plan on having it at least four or five days to the office, four or five days.
Yeah, so it'd probably be good since public comment ends on the 20th, to get it in, probably by the end of the 15th, and possibly as early in the morning as possible, or at the 18th of October, it'd probably be good, but by the end eventually, probably be best to get those to the office or send them out yourself, okay? Thanks, Father. So good to have you out there. Fills in all of my gaps, so. So, all right, let's under the prayer of being a Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit and Spirit. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee, blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us, now and the hour of our death. The Lord be with you.
Be with you.
Amen. God bless you, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Go with us. Thanks.